Good morning and welcome to a special meeting of Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, October thirty first. Happy Halloween to everybody. And it is nine AM. All members of the Court are present and the meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, I want to thank you for this day and thank you for the many men and women who work hard every day to make Harden County a great place to live. Thank you for everyone here today to make decisions for the county and we look towards your guidance and leadership to make sure that we make the right decisions for all of the employees and the citizens of the county. Thank you for the men and women who fight overseas and at home to keep us safe every day. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On item number three, we have Carmen Apple, the District Coordinator with the Texas Department of Public Safety, Texas Division of Emergency Management, to give us a presentation today on disaster recovery information. Good morning, Ms. Apple. How are you?
Good. Thank you very much, Judge and Commissioners. I'll take one real quickly. I'll make this brief so that you can continue business. There's a couple of things that I wanted to discuss with you and remind you what you're getting is a brief on the elected officials' responsibilities and how to request assistance during an emergency or times of disaster. I work, as you know, for the Texas Division of Emergency Management. I work very closely with Teresa and over the past year, we've worked, I think, even closer than we have before. We've talked to each other multiple times a week. And as you know, the state of Texas over the past year has had a number of disasters. Harden County has not been immune to those. We've had two presidential declarations in the last twelve months here in Harden County. So we just want to reinforce how to get state aid. There's been a, gonna be a little bit of a change for Harden County with that and also a little bit of change on your threshold. FEMA is raising thresholds beginning October first of this year. So first of all, let me say in the past, to get a request with the state of Texas, you, Teresa would go on to Web E O C, which is a, for lack of a better term, a database, an informational and requesting database. And that database has been on a server that's been owned by another jurisdiction. So the system itself was built for another jurisdiction. They've been allowing Harden County to use it at no cost. However, that has come into a little bit of problems because naturally, since they own it, when they've made changes or updates, they tweak it to meet their needs, not necessarily the needs of Harden County. So Teresa and I have been in discussion and we've been working very closely to try and get Harden County moved over to the state server called the Lone Star Server. And have those boards and those request mechanisms built specifically for your needs. We're about ninety-seven percent complete. This will come at no cost to the county. This is a service that the state is gonna provide to try and better make your request process easier and have it fit your needs, not the needs of another jurisdiction. We will be meeting Wednesday afternoon with the T D M's Critical Information Systems Team. That is doing the build out for all of Harden County and the cities that Teresa has identified and that have acknowledged that they would like to participate in this. We're gonna meet with them Wednesday afternoon to get some finalization on how they want it built specifically for you and your needs. And hopefully, I know by the end of the year, first of next year, we'll have it completely built out and we will transition Harden County over from the other jurisdiction server to the state server. I think this will be a better mechanism for you to request the state of Texas assets. I think it be, will be built specifically for you and your needs and as your needs change, then we will accommodate those needs and build it specifically to what you need to do with it. Again, this is at no cost to Harden County or any of the cities within Harden County. And we've been working on this together for about a year, so I'm pleased to announce that we're in the final stages of it. And this should make things a little bit easier for Teresa and whoever will be working those logistical requests during an emergency. We'll also note that October first of this year, FEMA came out with the new Consumer Price Index for disasters. And if you'll look on page nine of the packet that I gave you, the Consumer Price Indicator is multiplied by the twenty-ten census for Harden County. And you'll see Harden County's twenty-ten census was fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five, which at that time made our threshold a hundred and ninety-five thousand and forty-seven dollars. The per capita for countywide went from three dollars and fifty-seven cents per person to three dollars and sixty-one cents per person. So that raised our threshold to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. So our threshold's going up almost three thousand dollars, which may not seem like a lot, but it could be a lot if we're on that bubble of whether or not we meet our threshold. Commissioner, did you have a question, sir?
What was it again? One ninety-seven?
Uh, one ninety-seven, two thirty-two, point thirty-five to be specific. They have not adjusted the CPI for any census newer than twenty-ten. It's still maintained at the twenty-ten census. I don't know if they're going to be looking into that or not, but from October first on, this will be our new threshold for disaster declarations, one ninety-seven, two thirty-two. With that being said, anytime you need something, on the front of the packet you have my information. I think we've worked really well in the past to get you the resources that you need. Again, Teresa and I have worked very well the past four years that I've been assigned here. And we've talked multiple times throughout the week. And I hope for anything else that might come up in the future, we're gonna continue to have this good working relationship and make sure that the citizens of Harden County get service and get the resources that you need to sustain your operations and bring back some type of more normalcy after a disaster. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. If not, I just wanted to make you aware of those two changes, but we are working to move you over to the state server so that it'll be built specifically for you and your needs at no cost to you. And our threshold did go up just a little bit.
Carmen, I had one question.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. Of course, working with the state and then being assigned to the E O C in the last disaster, I'm pretty well aware of how the system works and, and, I mean, it does, to me, it works great. But I had one area of concern and I wanted to ask you this question. There was supposed to be some reps getting with you to talk to you about this. In the event that it looks like that we're gonna have a disaster, the state resources have a big area to cover. In other words, if we don't know exactly where the, just going with a hurricane, for example, if we don't know where landfall's gonna be, then they're gonna have a staging area and then they start moving their resources. One area of concern that I had is if we have a potential of one and the judge calls for an evacuation and we need assistance on transportation, ambulances or whatever prior to landfall. I don't think the state would be able to move enough equipment up here to help us out because we still have potential, Corpus Christi or wherever. Is that correct in assuming that?
Typically, we, when we activate those state bus contracts, we have to activate those right at about a hundred and twenty hours out, which is why we have the one hundred and twenty hour planning. Just to throw the switch on that at the state level costs a little over three million dollars from the state. The first thing that happens once those buses are activated is they have to go to San Antonio to what we call Alamo Command because those buses do have to be inspected to meet Department of Transportation permitting rules, regulations and guidelines to make sure that the buses we're putting on the roads are safe for the evacuees to travel in. Hopefully, that gives us a little bit of time, so maybe that cone of error starts to narrow a little bit. But I know I do have on my desk requests for just over two hundred and thirty buses and about three hundred ambulances, both.
Covered how many counties, would you say?
All three counties. Now, that's what I'm going to be requesting. Will that be what I get? I don't know because those decisions on what they're actually going to give me are going to be based in Austin. So.
Just in that area that we spoke about as far as buses, ambulances or whatever, do you see it being an advantage to us to go out for private contracts for just that prior to the disaster coming in? Or do you see us being safe and relying on the state to provide that?
Well, it depends on what you would be contracting for. Would you be contracting for buses or ambulances? If you're looking at ambulances, then are these people that are home-based individuals? Because we know that medical individuals that are in a nursing home type of facility, those facilities by law are regulated by Department of State Health Services. They have to have a plan and they have to have contracts to move those individuals out of harm's way.
I think in that area, as far as the, Teresa can correct me if I'm wrong, as far as the nursing homes, most of them are gonna shelter in place. Is that their plan?
They're not supposed to.
Okay. I know two in Silvy that I've talked to says that's their plan for the future. Now, whether or not they can or they're gonna do that, I don't know, but that would cut down the number that we would actually need there.
We don't advise it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to each individual nursing home, depending on the category of the storm.
Yeah.
But they should have their own, they have their own plans in place to get out. So they have contracts with ambulances to get them out.
What about our two-on-one people?
They either go to the embarkation hub or we request ambulances to get the medically, the ones that are, have a lot of medical needs. And we've gotten them out of the area okay. I mean, we haven't had any.
In the past, did we have a contract with anybody or we just?
No.
Where did we get the ambulance?
We relied on the state.
Okay. That's all we have.
It doesn't, there's no detriment in terms of having a contract if there's no upfront expense. The only problem would be if you activated a contract and then you had to pay for that expense and for some reason, the storm didn't cause as much damage or like those storms typically do, they keep clicking and clicking. If we did not meet our threshold or qualify for a presidential declaration, then there would be no reimbursement on that potential expense.
Like in Gustav, we evacuated and it didn't hit here.
Exactly. With Gustav. And with Umberto, if you remember, Umberto was a tropical storm, made landfall as a cat one. It didn't do enough damage. We didn't meet thresholds in Umberto to qualify for presidential declaration. So those jurisdictions did not have an avenue of reimbursement. With that being said, I'm gonna fight my hardest to get all the resources that I can and that we've identified as being what's needed for this three-county area. What Austin sends me is what we're gonna have to deal with and the captain and I will try to equitably divide those resources if we don't get the number that we're requesting. We'll try to see, you know, which are most fragile residents that need to be evacuated and need evacuation assistance. Which of those residents are in harm's way the most and try and move them out. And a lot of it's going to depend on what type of storm it is. We know with the two different hurricanes, we had two different threats. With Rita, it was mostly a wind threat. With Ike, it was mostly a surge threat. So there's a lot of different factors that will come into play into how, whatever resources we get will be divided equitably. But you can, you can guarantee, I will be fighting for all of the resources that I have identified. And we'll be, again, asking for the airlift to come in to help with our medically fragile as well.
And we're having the state evacuation exercise and they wanna tell them about that.
Yes. Next June, we are Region Two, which is from Lufkin on down to Houston. We will be doing a statewide, full-scale evacuation exercise. We will be bringing in transports to the Jack Brooks Regional Airport. We're gonna ask for volunteers. We're gonna be in buses. We're gonna be in ambulances. And we are gonna play it just like we would in the real world. We're going to stand up the D D C. I believe Teresa's going to stand up the E O C. All the jurisdictions in Jefferson County and some in Orange County will be playing. So we're gonna do a full-scale evacuation exercise. We'll move individuals out. Some will go to shelters in our sheltering jurisdictions to spend the night in a shelter. And then the next day, we'll reverse the process, bring them back and practice how we repatriate our evacuated citizens.
This is one time we could all evacuate.
Yeah.
Definitely could.
I was thinking I'd volunteer to take the plane, right? Where we going?
To San Antonio.
I could spend the night?
It'll be in a shelter. But we are gonna play that June, the first part of June. And the captain and I have had some discussions and we do want to play it like we would in a real-world evacuation. So we're going to stand up Ford Park. We will have those assets, the buses and the ambulances staged there. And as the requests come in, we're gonna deploy them from Ford Park down to the jurisdictions that need them. So we'll have that practice and hopefully, that's all it'll be for several years is practice.
And I've already been in touch with Lamar University for criminal justice students to be our volunteers, so.
Oh, that's excellent.
You're gonna be married then too, so you're gonna have to.
Now we got a little record.
It's nothing to do with this.
But please know for any questions, anything that you need, you know, that's, my number right there on the front page is, is the number that you can get me on, twenty-four seven. I even take it with me on vacation. So if, if you don't have it, please save it. Please feel free to call me. I thank you very much for the working relationship that we have. It's been wonderful, especially with Teresa. She's, she's been very helpful in trying to get this move over to the state server so that we can build it out specifically for you and your needs. And all the jurisdictions in Harden County will have that same as well. So I really appreciate all her help and getting this done, so. That is a personal one. Yes, sir. You can keep that one too. That one does, may not be as answered as frequently as the other one is.
I never have seen this one, so I'll put it in there too.
That, that is the one that's on twenty-four seven.
And if you call Carmen, she answers.
Oh, I know.
Carmen, we want to thank you for all of your help. You've been there for us this past year and we know you'll be there for us in the future. We hope we don't need you, but we know if we do, you'll be there and we appreciate that.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you so much and please feel free to call me with any questions or concerns that you might have.
Aye, thank you.
All right, item number three, Misty Sims, purchasing agent. Adoption of Resolution Number thirty-five dash sixteen, authorizing and approving execution of a lease purchase agreement with Bancorp South Equipment Finance for the networking, cabling and V O I P phone system projects, as approved in Commissioners Court on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. I'd like to take just a moment to, for just a little bit of discussion on this that we did not do in the meeting last Monday. Everybody will look, there's an attachment to your resolution and this shows how much we have budgeted for telephone and internet for this fiscal year. And then the cost that we're looking to outlay just for the cabling and V O I P project. It will come in under budget and I'm very proud that we were able to work and get that done. And I want to thank the committee for working to get, make sure that that happened that way. They worked with the vendor to negotiate their price down. It is still quite a bid and that's why I wanted to take a little bit of time and talk about exactly what the cost is. And Misty, do you have it handy? Is it, is it, it's spelled out in the resolution, isn't it? The total cost?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Two, two thirty-six, four forty, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And that's over a five-year period. And then after that five-year period is over, we, we would drop down to only paying the annual amount to Time Warner, which is eighteen thousand, plus whatever our cable TV cost is. As you can see right now, that's six seventy-one a month, but Misty's working to get that lowered as well and feels like she can get that cut in half, if not, if not more than that. So just wanted to kind of make sure that we were open with everyone about that. It is a large project. That's two hundred and twenty-five handsets throughout the courthouse and all nine satellite offices, plus the equipment and the labor to get it installed. And then plus all of the switching equipment and cabling and labor to, for the networking and cabling project as well. And if there's no more discussion, I'll take the vote.
Looks like we have a really good interest rate.
Yes, sir. That's another thing. Misty had got a better interest rate than the one that we'd gotten through T T I, which was an N E C finance note at seven percent. And I think she got a two-point-three-nine percent through Bancorp South.
Very good.
So that saved us quite a bit as well. All right, once again, we have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. There's no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Misty Sims, correction regarding results and awarding of bids for motor fuel, oil and lubricants for all road and bridge precincts previously adopted in Commissioners Court on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
I apologize, I had a mistake on the bidder zone for automatic transmission fluid. It should've been, the lowest bidder was C and I Oil Company on both drum and gallon. It was four hundred and twenty-two dollars and one cent a drum and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents a gallon.
We accept the correction. Same.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, just, I'm sorry, Misty Sims, authorization for county judge to sign copier lease agreement with Xerox Corporation for the three fifty-six District Judge Court Room. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, discussion, discussion concerning road and bridge software program.
Commissioners, I've spoken with some of you in person and just been doing some research. Eddie and Suzanne Earhart had designed and implemented Precinct Tracker and of course, their local company. And it was their, their brainchild and we know that both of them have, are deceased. And the company has been passed on to their son. There's some question of whether or not he's gonna be able to keep up with the updates. In fact, it has not been updated in several years and through some research that I've done, it's on the verge of being extinct really as far as software goes. And so I know that we're depending on a former employee who is contracting with the company now whenever we do have issues. And so we're at basically, we're underneath that stress and pressure of we may not have a service person available should our system crash. And so I've reached out to E-Logic, who's also a local company. They said it would take six to nine months to develop a program that will resemble what we have. It would be updated and better with Precinct Tracker. We do not own the software. We lease it from Precinct Tracker. With E-Logic, we would own it and have, we would have availability of service at a moment should we need it. And they will have routine updates. One of the things they're looking at doing is being able to tie, like if we go in and put in a road and address of where we done work, that, that can also be tied to Google Earth. So you can actually pull up the location where the work was done. That's the type of software we're looking at. The price has been, has been thrown out there and I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to negotiate with that. I spoke very briefly with the judge of maybe taking some out of Commissioners Court funds in order to pay for half of it and then maybe about thirty-five hundred from each commissioner to make up the difference. And so the judge said that, that we could discuss that and be open to taking a portion of that money from Commissioners Courts and, and do that. So I would just ask if y'all would look at that. If you have any questions, feel free to call. Wally Wisenhun, who is, who I've been speaking with, feel free to call and talk directly with him. And then with, with y'all's permission, maybe at the end of November, put it on Commissioners Court for a discussion and approval, if y'all want to go that route. I think it's down to about, probably about thirty-five hundred per precinct to replace it if we take half of the money from Commissioners Courts.
So that leaves, what's the total cost of the, estimated cost of the?
Forty thousand, but I'm gonna see if we can get it down.
Okay, so that's, that's under what we're required to bid, right?
Formal bid, yes, sir. If it's under fifty thousand, but we're still, probably should advertise it.
Yeah, which would be fine with me. I mean. My main thing is I started feeling kind of desperate, so I kind of, I reached out to Wally to say, hey, is this something y'all could do? Because we're really at the mercy of, does a guy have the drive and passion to correct this, the software and system? And I've not been, I don't feel confident.
I think that it's a great idea and I appreciate you looking into that. What I would suggest, and this is just a suggestion to the judge, is a form a committee consisting of a couple of secretaries and let Commissioner Kirkendall chair it and let them look into this. Because like Commissioner Kirkendall said, I think that this is something that really needs to be looked into. And, and it's not so much the fact that we couldn't go to the system, the software system that the other courthouse personnel are in because we're kind of unique on, on keeping up on man-hours and all that kind of stuff. And that software doesn't have the capability.
Right. Yeah, that's just for accounting that we have here.
Right.
And that is something that we need to, we need to discuss at some point in the future. We do need some good software that, that will connect all of the departments in the courthouse that do judicial work, but that's something we'll bring up and later down the road.
If you decide that that's what you want to do as far as committee, I would like my secretary to be on that committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
In fact, I mean, I would be, if, if it's okay, all the secretaries.
Yeah.
Be on it. That way, everybody has some input. Because one of the things that we'll be able to do is network. Now, I think Wally said he could, he could get with the auditor's office and what have you, where we could maybe go paperless as well. I don't know if y'all want to do that, but where, where we could coordinate with your office and that we'd be able to network, so whatever that consists of.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to have, we have to have our stuff for, like, like just what we went through, the disasters. We have to have everything itemized and that's what Precinct Tracker basically does now.
Yes.
But like you said, if it's gonna be obsolete, it's gonna be obsolete. So we're gonna need to do something.
And Precinct Tracker is something y'all bought how many years ago?
Hmm, about eighteen.
And I think the cost then was around how much?
Thirty thousand.
So here we are, this many years later, this is forty. That's not really a bad deal. Is there an annual support fee or anything?
It will be. I think right now, each precinct's paying about eight hundred a year. And so that'd be what, thirty-two hundred? And so I'm sure once we sit down, get the committee together and, and talk about what we need and we get to where we're going, we can make that part of that process.
It, it would be tailored to road and bridge.
Mm-hmm.
So that.
To our road and bridge, it sounds like.
Yes.
To parking cars.
We were the guinea pigs started off.
Yes.
But you know, for instance, if I want to find out, if I get a complaint that says, you haven't worked on my road in three months. Well, all she has to do is put the information in and it tells exactly what date we worked on that road, what equipment we used, what materials we used and stuff like that. And that is a major benefit I have for, for me.
Will they pull that data into the new program?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Good deal. All right. Well, why don't we put it on the next agenda to go out to advertise and we'll appoint a committee at the same time and just let everybody work on that together.
Sounds good.
And we'll make that.
I'd like to ask this question of, of Misty. If we're going to, you know, go out for some type of proposal, which the state, it's not required by the state.
Right.
But if that would be the desire, then probably we don't need Chris to try to get these people down anymore or something, huh? Private negotiation?
I think if, and this is just my opinion and maybe a lack of knowledge, but I think if we go out for competitive bids on this, the competition realizes how unique this is because it's not just a regular software program. They, I mean, Chris has already touched base with these guys and they understand what we have. Once the other competitors realize that, I don't think we'll have much competition.
Well, and it's six to nine months in development as well. So if we approved it, say, December, you're still summertime.
August, yeah.
Or only, yeah. Well, the reason, reason I bring that up is that, you know, if we go out for proposals, I guess, you know, this, this might be a proprietary deal.
Which it would be. It would be.
Yeah. But there are some state regulations that, that govern this that we just found out going through the attorney on this seal code. And so, you know, I think, and then County Issues had an article about that, influencing the bids and stuff by writing specs that only one. Now, this to me has to be adapt, or has to be adaptable to what we're using right now, like Precinct Tracker, because it's a specialty deal. And, but I think there are some things that we need to consider and I would say that, you know, let's make a decision whether we want it or not, which I think we do because no doubt, we're not gonna be able to maintain what we have. But we need to be careful that we don't box ourselves in. But we need to be careful that we don't box ourselves in and go afoul of state law that we're trying to write specs that nobody else can bid by.
Right.
Yeah. They had a very good article y'all read in County Magazine, this about proprietary, single contractor stuff. Yeah, very good article. But I, I, I'm all for it, I think it's a good idea.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate the work Chris has done.
Sure. Is everybody in agreement? We'll put that on our next regular meeting agenda to move forward with that?
I'm over with it, John.
Second. Third.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt, so we're adjourned. Thank y'all for coming in today.
Yes, sir.
Say, when is our next court?
November the fourteenth, I believe.
Okay.
Senator, you ready?
So that's gonna be after Veterans Day. I want to invite everybody, whatever, after Veterans Day, the Sire Lake dedicated memorial.